Hello, everybody, and welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and all other media are in it, um, and other media in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, please let me know. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. And the first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Let's let everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes and can I get a motion?
Motion from Chris, second from Neil. All in favor?
Oh, you weren't here, so yeah, you're staying.
Yeah. Okay.
All approved. Thank you. Announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do members of the committee have any announcements, correspondence, or distributions to share this evening? No? Okay. You know, an invitation to speak. Is there anyone present? I don't see anyone. Um, who would like to speak this evening? Okay. So with that being, uh, with that being said, we move along to, uh, the Milford Community Use Program reappointment.
And so, so basically, it's, it's right here.
Okay, so the Milford Community Use Program is requesting the school committee's approval of the reappointment of Mr. Ron Kreacia to the board for another three-year term. Uh, so we need a motion for that.
I'm listening.
Uh, so John moves, and a second from Joe. Any discussion? All in favor? Approved. Very good. Uh, Milford town, town meeting articles.
Okay, so, um, we have to the committees approve this meeting to one articles.
Thank you, Perry.
Um, the first article, um, as presented is, uh, for ninety-two thousand to upgrade the HVAC equipment and software at Stacy School. This is a proprietary, uh, project with, uh, the particular vendor that we have district-wide. Um, but the advantage is that it would allow the, uh, director of facilities to be able to control and communicate from anywhere, including his phone, um, to, uh, control the temperatures both, both for the heating and the air conditioning. Um, and, and currently Rob has that control, uh, in all the buildings. And so this would upgrade the ability at Stacy to be able to do that. Do we wanna vote on each article, uh, Mr. Chair, or do them both?
Um, you wanna vote on them together? I think it probably makes sense to do that.
Uh, I would keep them separate.
You wanna keep them separate?
Go separate.
Okay. I'm cool with that. Any other discussion on that?
Um, I just quickly, I know that this is something that's been on the capital improvement, so it's something that we've been aware of for a number of years. Um, and I think we budgeted a hundred thousand, we're at ninety-four, you said?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, so, so certainly something again, uh, that we've been anticipating and then now we're, we're looking to move forward on it, so.
Correct. Thank you, Chris.
Great.
Okay, so the first one?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, I'll, I'll motion to, um, move that article forward to town meeting.
We got a motion. Okay, so, and a second. Second from Chris, uh, first from John, second from Chris. All in favor? Do I need a motion for the second one? Or Kathy, wanna, you wanna review the second one again?
Sure. So the second proposal that we have has been, um, essentially, not only locally, but, um, at essentially at the high school, they've been working on a, creating a bios- medical science classroom. And that's in collaboration with, uh, many different funding sources, one being Project Lead the Way that got essentially the project, uh, initiated. And now we're trying to bring equipment, um, to the new, the three new labs that we created. In the high school, we took away some space that was not being utilized to the best of what the advantage could provide to the students. And, um, it's two new, uh, science labs. As you walk out here, you can look over and see them over to the left. So this program will, um, provide an upgrade to the science lab, again, in the biomedical field, which will essentially encompass the anatomy, physiology, pre-medical, pre-veterinary, and pre-dental, and the pre-nursing studies by just purchasing this equipment, which will be, um, mobile. It will not be stationary equipment, so it will be, have the advantage to be mu- moved in the future. I don't know if Kevin or Craig want to discuss any additional-
So, uh, let me throw two more things out there. The, well, one thing is that science equipment at the high school level in particular is, is, um, very expensive. And two, we've looked at a number of funding sources over the years. We're also in the process of, of writing a grant to the state, um, to get the, um, Innovation Pathway designation, which will allow us to go for, um, additional science equipment. I, you know, I wanna commend Josh Ottlin, Cicely Tucker, and the high school science team, um, for really, I think, reconfiguring the science program at the high school and adding a couple of pathways already through, um, Project Lead the Way courses in computer science and, um, and in biomedical. But, but also the work around looking at multiple sources, whether it's Project Lead the Way, state funding, and some private sources to get some of these programs initially off the ground. And this will, um, this, this won't move us to state-of-the-art across the board, but it's moving us in the right direction.
Perfect. So we need a motion for the second?
How many, um, classrooms or labs are we planning on up, up to?
Well, we, we just added the, uh, physics lab, which we took, uh, some facility space that was done over the summer. Um, in addition, the two labs here that are, are new, that are out, with the, with the science teachers kinda collaborated, they built two labs independent of one another. So it was addition of three.
So- So this, this proposal would, would be able to equip three, three science labs, basically, in a sense, fully, like to bring them up to date?
Just for the biomedical piece.
Just so this, just the biomedical piece. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Now, this, this isn't something I know that we, we didn't really have it on the long-term capital improvement plan, I know, but it's something that we've always discussed. I just-
Right. So it's been on the plan for the last year.
It's been on the talking, yeah.
We've been, no, it was actually on the plan last, at the beginning of last year.
Okay.
And that might be an old copy I have, possibly.
Yeah, okay. Uh, this one's from last, this was last year's, that's why, so I didn't see it throughout. So, no, I just, again, I, I think it's important, I just,
Okay.
you know, it's, you know, a quarter million dollars that landed on our lap this morning. Um, so that's why I just don't want to, you know, I, I honestly, I didn't get a chance to review everything just because there was so much information, um, there. I just, you know, I think something like this, I know we've talked about it, so I'm certainly for it. It's just, again, it's a, it's a quarter million dollars that, you know, was, you know, it's seven o'clock at night and I got it at nine o'clock this morning. So it's a lot to, lot of information to go over, that's all. So I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, in our best interest to make sure that we give this committee enough time to review something like this. And I wanna make sure that FinCom understands that this is coming too, because we're gonna need FinCom support when we get to town meeting, because, you know, a quarter million dollars to retrofit a class is certainly going to take a lot of backing, I think, from this board and throughout the community, community itself. So, again, it's good for our students, we want it to happen. Um, but again, let's make sure that we're, we're ready to back this up with, with everything that we need.
Is that something we wanna consider, like pushing off to the next meeting, so you can, so we can everyone have a review or a discussion? Do you wanna go for it now?
So the only, the only issue with that would be, um, when did, when did they want it still?
September twelve.
September twelve.
Uh, so we don't have the sites for it.
September twelve, so, no, so I'm okay with not pushing it off because of it. It's just, I think I'm more just from a talking point of,
Yeah, okay.
to make sure, again, I'm wholeheartedly for this, just make sure.
Okay. Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll go with a motion? Any other?
I asked you to mention all the other sorts. Kevin, so I know there's sort of a phased approach in terms of there's additional funding
Yeah.
that we'd like obviously to continue to enhance. Do you know the plan for the budgeting of the rest of those expenses? Like, would we incorporate that into our budget next year, or?
Well, we do, we have incorporated, uh, the furniture into our budget to-
So those would come back as capital as well, due to the nature of what they are? Just so I'm understanding. Okay.
That's, but if you look at the fr- in terms of the science equipment only, nothing to retrofit the room
Yep.
in terms of what would be supplanting the budget, so to speak, for furniture.
Yep.
He does have his phase here, uh, fall of twenty-twenty.
Yep.
And he's looking to do the biotech, the chem science, and the physical science, science areas.
Okay. I mean, I think to Chris's point, to the extent we're connecting with the FinCom subcommittee, just that we could have kind of a more thoughtful approach in terms of what's coming, so that everyone is aware, um, as we move forward. And then we know that these additional phases, which I think make a lot of sense, are something that we really wanna do, just so that they're on the, um, game plan.
Yeah, and we've had these conversations with the subcommittee over the last couple of years.
Right. So they're not gonna be surprised. Great.
The amounts are always a surprise, to some degree, but I think that the conversation, and I think the committee's aware that, the subcommittee's aware
Yes.
that, you know, the science equipment at the high school level is, is, it's an expensive undertaking.
Yeah. And we've gone through, we did three quotes. Obviously, we have the backup data here that was the single quote, but-
We've met all the criteria.
Yeah.
Just to, to affirm that.
Yeah.
You know.
Just based on the amounts, we have to, we have to do our-
Ex- exactly, yeah. I'm just more putting it out there that we did go through the process of getting three quotes, just so publicly people understand that, so.
Well, just to be clear, the, um, the HVAC is proprietary, so we cannot get the three quotes.
That- Yeah, I understand that. Um, I guess I'm talking to the, the science equipment, certainly. It's, it was the documentation that was attached
Okay.
that for, for my review, obviously, showed quoting, um, from a few different companies, but, um, but it was the best quote. Alright, thank you.
Right.
Chris, do you have one more question?
Sure.
Kevin, is, will we be implementing it in this current school year, or would it not be available kind of fully installed until next fall? I was just curious.
So I think the way the funds are released, we'll be able to bring it in and probably, I think, we're, probably second semester.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thanks.
Yeah. Yeah. 'Cause there's a little bit of a gap in, you know, in terms of ordering and delivery and that sort of thing, but ideally, it'd be used this school year.
I, I would think, sure. Yep. Okay.
So you can go down the approval of the October town meeting.
Correct. Well, then, once, once, once that approval takes place and we're authorized, how many days to release the funds? Is it immediate?
Yeah.
It's almost immediate after town meeting. They just set it up for us. And so I would say I'd agree, we'd have the shipping, it'd be executed January.
So we'd probably, probably install the stuff over Christmas vacation, over the December break.
Okay.
And what are our next steps with FinCom, so they understand this?
So, so we're meeting with the subcommittee on September eleventh.
Next Wednesday.
And, and we do this as an annual meeting.
Okay. Is that full committee?
That's the subcommittee, and they're going to the full committee.
Your sub- Their, their subcommittee. Alright.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need a motion?
I will motion.
We don't have to, to be a second.
Yeah. We'll go Meg. We'll go Meg, and, uh, we'll go with second from Chris.
Thank you.
Uh, all in favor? All set. Thank you very much. And so we move on to the, um, Milford Public School Policy First Reading for Woodland and MHS turf field complex usage.
So I believe, because we didn't have our policy meeting tonight, that we're gonna probably have to table this till Oc- October.
Don't want to table.
Um, one of the things, Kath, do you wanna talk about the billing for the, the town teams? Because that's one of the big issues. We don't bill the town teams till the end of the year for practice time, is that correct? Or is that inaccurate?
That, it's inaccurate. Typically, whether it's the turf or this, uh, building use, I believe it's, uh, pre-built.
Okay.
Based on their permit. Um, and this policy would, um, essentially remove that. I mean, we can put the billing on hold until we meet again and see where the policy, uh, if it gets approved.
Is, is the committee comfortable with that?
If we- I mean, if we would've had our policy meeting, I don't know if we would've made any other changes. I think we'd gone through and we were ready to present at that point.
I think we should just do that as a committee before, yeah, I think that would make sense.
Do you wanna do it one more time? That, that's fine. Okay, so.
So, so why don't we, as a practice, hold off on billing the town teams until we make a determination if there's gonna be a change?
Okay.
And I believe this is a first read of the policy anyway, Kevin, so we'll bring it back as a second read. And that's typically when the school committee would take action.
Correct. Any motion? Yep.
Yeah, I think we talked about that in years past. There's actually a policy that we have to go through the second reading, even if everybody's in, in agreement that this is what we wanna move forward with, so.
Okay.
I, I, I'd agree, we should just keep this as the first reading and bring the second reading till a future meeting.
Okay.
So we, we are considering this as the first read right now, or we're gonna table it till next week?
I, I, I'm comfortable leaving this as a first read, it's-
Yeah, but it, it's, um, everyone got it, so.
Yeah. Making you comfortable with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Okay.
And I think the subcommittee will have an opportunity to kind of re-review it, and then if there's any issues or changes, we can kinda bring it up at the second reading.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah.
Do we need a motion to accept the first reading?
I don't think so.
No, there's just first.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions about it? Should I hold off until next time, or?
Yeah.
Can we open them for discussion?
No, I think you should take those questions now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's open for discussion on it now.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, um,
That was just for you anyway, so.
So, no, I was just wondering if we discussed with the youth teams how they were gonna go about kind of, are they gonna pass those savings on to the families in Milford? Um, I didn't know if we'd talked to them and how they were gonna handle that, if they were gonna use the extra funds for new equipment. I didn't know what would, if we'd done that.
So-
That's good.
My, my quick take on it is, you know, if we didn't charge the teams, we wouldn't necessarily dictate to them what to do with that savings.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I think we would just offer it as like a community, I don't wanna say community service, but it's just a different, like, just provide that, as, like, that free access to, to town teams.
Okay.
And they can choose to reduce fees, or provide scholarships, or buy extra equipment, whatever they choose to do.
Okay. What about the total revenue that we got from the fees from last year? Do we have, I'm just curious what that was?
Exactly. Yeah.
It was really minimum money, uh, in terms of the youth groups. Um,
Okay.
Football probably, of course, would pay the, the greatest amount, um, but it's certainly not offsetting the capital to the point of replacing the turf.
Okay.
And Laura, to go back to your other question regarding the, I, you know, I did ask a few of the, uh, lead presidents, what would you do? And again, their, their thoughts were to put it back towards the kids, whether, again, like Kevin said, towards equipment,
Okay.
towards, um, uh, camps and clinics and things of that nature. So again, their, their thought was, you know, if we have more money to spend, yeah, that money's gonna go back to the kids and, and use for them. So, you know, the, the thought and why, I think they were on board of this, is a lot of them are, are, they're, or they are Milford residents, except for Milford Hope Daily Youth Soccer's, their tax dollars paid for the field already. So to have to pay an additional usage fee on top of it, um, seemed like a tax on a tax, right? So their, their hopes were, listen, we, our communities paid for these fields for, for community usage,
Mm-hmm.
so therefore, can we use these fields, um, you know, free of charge for, again, for our youth groups, just to, again, continue to build our youth groups, so.
Okay. Okay. Alright, great. Thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Okay, if anyone else is good, so no vote needed, so, uh, we just move on and we'll go with the votes for the second reading, yeah.
And we'll bring that to a second reading, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, moving on to the report of the superintendent of schools.
So I have two, um, agenda items, Mr. Chairman. The first one is the opening school report. Uh, school opened last Wednesday for students in grades one through twelve, and the opening went very smoothly. Um, I had the great opportunity to observe and participate in the, the great spirit at Stacy Middle School, where they literally rolled out the red carpet for, um, the middle school students. The faculty clapped and cheered as the students entered on the first day. Um, the enthusiasm, the energy, the spirit was, was awesome. Um, Milford High School used the first two, and if anybody has a chance, the video's on Twitter, on, on a couple of different locations. It, it really was, it was just a nice way to start, and you couldn't help but have a smile on your face. Um, Milford High School used the first two days as a freshman orientation for class assemblies, pictures, and another, and a number of other administrative tasks. And the great thing about that is they're able to compress all those activities in the first two days to avoid like the constant disruptions that happen over the first couple of weeks of school. And so far, the feedback has been pretty positive. So all the, like, administrative, like, tasks that had to be done were, were basically accomplished in the fir- in the first two days. Um, our middle school and high school athletic teams are off and running. I, I wanna really thank, um, athletic director Peter Boucher and the coaches for their quick adjustments to the schedule on the fly due to the, um, triple E restrictions. Um, that's caused, I think, a lot of, um, you know, scheduling issues with not only the, the high school and the middle school athletics, but also with, um, town sports. And I, and I appreciate everybody's patience and flexibility, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get a frost pretty soon and it will kind of, we'll kind of lift some of those restrictions. Our, our preschoolers started this week, and there was, again, tremendous excitement, a few tears, and a lot of great, um, educational activities and projects for the students to engage in. Um, our kindergarten students started today, and our teachers and schools welcomed them with open arms. Um, we're thrilled to be open. I wanna thank everyone for all of their hard work that made the first few days of school a smooth and positive experience for our students. And the second update I have, um, every, everybody has a calendar, a copy of a draft calendar at their, at their spot. So one of the things we noticed, and when we, when we see kind of, um, years where they're kind of outlier years, we try to make early adjustments when we can. And, and luckily, one of our administrators happened to catch this. And so we kind of did a, a review of what a potential calendar would look like. So next year's, um, Labor Day in two thousand, um, two thousand twenty in September falls on September seventh, which is relatively late. And this would potentially place the last day of school on June twenty-first without any snow days. And we are proposing to start school, um, next year on August twenty-sixth, which is basically the same week that school started this year. And that would put the last day of school on June eleventh without any snow days or school cancellations. Uh, the Milford Teachers Association, um, enthusiastically supported the one-week shift forward. Um, I'm asking the school committee to approve the calendar, this calendar that you have in front of you for the twenty-twenty school year, early so that families have plenty of notice for the approval, for the, for the, uh, potentially newly approved calendar and the earlier than typical start. And I think the one thing that, oh, Milford High School graduation is on air. So the high school graduation would be on June sixth, next year.
Right, so we, we need a motion to, uh-
So I think maybe discussion first and then-
Yeah, good. Good. Yeah.
Go ahead, Laura.
I just had a question about the start date for kindergarten, because it looks like, um, we're starting on September tenth for our kindergarten students, which is still after Labor Day. So all of our other students and siblings would be starting ten days earlier.
So I think that- Yeah, so that, that's actually inaccurate, so I would, the, the, it's basically, so that's why this is a draft too, so, so we catch things like that.
Okay. Okay. Yep.
So, so basically, um, and I missed that one. So basically, what would happen is all the other dates would move forward, so I don't think we move some of those other, like, the preschool dates forward. So what we would do is basically, like, kindergarten tends to start, um, like, the following-
Day five.
Yeah, basically, day five. So we do this, we do-
Okay, so we would anticipate that they would also start day five, so would that be before Labor Day?
Correct, correct. And as well as the, yeah, as well as the preschool.
So they would bump up?
They would bump up, yes.
So they would start like the second before Labor Day?
Yeah. Uh-
Yeah, which would give Wednesday and Thursday.
Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday, that's correct. Yeah.
Still two days, like they have this week.
And then we'd have the four-day weekend like we typically do. We kept that intact.
Okay.
And then we're, we're back in business with the regular schedule after that.
And then, sorry.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead.
That first week, is it still just that Wednesday, Thursday that we've typically done? Friday, they would, would they, would they go, 'cause typically, we've always started Wednesday, Thursday with a Friday off, but that also fell on Labor Day weekend. What's the proposed, I guess, first few days? Is it straight in twenty-six through,
Yes.
twenty-six, which is a Wednesday, straight through to Friday?
So, so, yeah, so basically, we do a three-day first week.
Three day, yeah.
And then the following week would be a four-day week, because then we'd have that four-day weekend that we traditionally have.
Is a, is a four. It would be, okay.
And then, and then another four-day week.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Right. Yeah.
Did you ask the teachers or the union if they supported something different, or?
They seem to, like, just, they just, and I, they didn't have the detail at the time when they support their proposals, basically just,
They just- Okay.
what I shared with them at that point. And again, I think we're gonna have to tweak some of these initial dates,
Yeah.
like the start of kindergarten and the start of preschool to kind of follow the same pattern that they typically do.
Yep.
But they, they like the idea of, um, you know, starting basically the same week this, that we did this year and ending early. They felt really good about the early ending last year.
I just didn't know if we wanted to look at something where, like, maybe the teachers go back that first week and maybe kids start the second week or something?
So the only, the only issue with that is we don't gain additional school days. We just gain, so we'd only be able to go back two days, 'cause we only have two professional days built into the contract.
Okay.
So what I'm trying to, what, what this does, which I like,
Uh-huh.
is initially, we thought it would end on the, the fourteenth, but because Rosh Hashanah starts at sundown on a Friday, we actually have school on a Friday, where tr- where typically, if it was, if it falls during the week, we, we would have a, a holiday.
Yeah.
So this, this would end us on the June eleventh, early. We're, we're inevitably gonna have at least one or two snow days, but it would still end us probably in mid-June if we have a typical winter.
Have we ever looked at, um, the day, the day before Thanksgiving as a half-day? I know some districts have a half or a full there, just to pick up a day there, um-
That's a contractual obligation, like I mentioned.
Really? As a day off?
Half a day off.
Good Friday.
It's, it's something we could look at in the next contract negotiations.
Yeah, Good Friday also?
Contractual obligation.
Fair enough. Makes sense then. So again, yeah, those were two dates that I wasn't sure, again, if you could do as a half-day.
Yeah.
But contracts are contracts, so I think that-
But again, it's something we could bring up in negotiations.
Certainly. Okay, well, and this, yeah, I mean, this is kind of an anomaly anyways, as far as where the dates fall.
Next time, Laura.
So it happens probably once every six to seven years, but.
Yeah.
Okay. So if this is just a draft, would you, you'll be coming back?
So we could either vote on that with the changes to the preschool and kindergarten start dates, and Craig, if you wanna figure out what those would be?
First and second.
Can, can, can we vote to, you know, for the first day of school to be on the twenty-sixth with the rest of the dates to fall into place?
Yeah.
You know, because they, they're all triggered by, you know, a couple of days afterwards and-
Yeah. Yeah. And then the reason I'm asking for it early is because it's a little bit of a change on what to get it out to families, really, more than anything else.
You wanna make a motion, or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to start the twenty-twenty school year, um, for students on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, second. Joe? All in favor?
I'd agree on it.
No? One against?
No, rather wait.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm thinking of-
Okay, two against. What do you guys wanna do? You wanna have it out of discussion?
It's, it's, it's a vote, I don't know if we can.
It's a vote.
No.
So what was it? What was it, four-two or three-two with an abstention?
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, so that would be a pass then.
I think it was, I think it was four to two.
Four to two, okay. Alright, so that would be a pass then.
Four to two. I was gonna say, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, no, you jump in.
No, no.
Um, what I can do is I can bring back a final version of this, and, um, and we can always make adjustments, but I'd like to-
I was gonna say, can't we, can't we adjust it even when you bring it back?
I, I, I can. You, you can as a group too, yeah. So we'll, we'll make, we'll make those two adjustments, and if people see something they're, they're not comfortable with,
Yeah, so it's not-
that we get a lot of pushback in the community, it's something we can always look at.
I mean, the, the problem, so to speak, right now, is that we did, we did make that vote. It's, it's public for anyone watching.
We voted in.
Um, I wish I had heard, you know, some of the disagreement, uh, as opposed to just the questions.
Well, I think, 'cause it says draft on it, and I think that we still have to adjust some dates. So I'd rather, I know your motion was to start on a certain day, but I think my, you know, I'd rather vote on a complete document as opposed to a partial, so.
Well, that, that, that was part of the motion for the rest of the documents to come forward.
Yeah, you just, so your motion was just to start on a particular date.
I, I think that's how I phrase it, to start on the twenty-sixth with the rest of the dates to fall into place,
That was it, yeah. Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, right.
Which would require a second vote, I believe, for the rest of the-
Right. That's what I saw. I, I, I took it as the, that motion was just to get the document going. Really, to get that, that first date set. So. Alright, well, we can, we can continue to work that anyway.
So I can bring the final versions at the next meeting, too, so people can rereview it.
Alright.
Alright?
Alright.
And that's all I have?
Then I move on to Craig.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to bring your attention to, um, this, the conference in Boston, um, put on by the National Con- Council of Teachers in Mathematics. Uh, we wrote a grant to get between twenty and twenty-two math teachers to this conference. So, right now, we're in the process of identifying who those teachers will be. We're trying to get a teacher, at least one teacher, in every grade level, um, to be part of that. Um, so we're looking for three teachers in high school, three teachers in, at the middle school, and basically, three teachers at every school, um, because of the way the grade configuration is. We, when these big conferences like this happen in, in our area, we try to identify grants and, and ways to get money to send our teachers to these conferences so that they can connect with other professionals from around the world, um, and go s- learn what's happening outside of our district, uh, in, in, I guess, the world of mathematics in this case. Uh, we did, last year, send some people to the, there was an art conference. We also sent someone to a foreign language conference. Uh, the year before that, we sent, um, forty or fifty staff members to ASCD Conference in Boston. Um, so I, I guess, this is part of a plan, so you know, of, uh, this math committee that we're forming to look at just math practices across the district. Uh, and we're hoping that this really kicks off that, um, that committee's work, really, in bringing that group of teachers together. So, um, I don't know if anybody has questions about it?
Who, who was calling again?
Uh, there's approximately twenty staff members from across the, the district.
Right. Yeah, and it's a few from each school.
Every school. Every school's gonna have representation. Right now, we're, I just identifying who they are.
Yeah.
We had, we posted positions for a math, uh, committee.
Mm-hmm.
And part of the math committee will be that they're going to this. So it's all kinda interconnected.
And is this something our, our new math curriculum supervisor goes to?
Yes. Yeah, and then, um, the math, the math supervisor's overseeing that whole committee's work, so.
Sounds a great opportunity, Craig, and I think, you know, whenever things are local, it's great that we can take advantage, so thanks for reaching out on the grant front to, to fund it.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Alright. Alright, Kathy?
Uh I have for the committee's pool this evening uh six, I'm s- I apologize, seven warrants totaling six hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-three cents.
Got a motion? John, Joe, all in favor?
We also have a uh professional development request for cost reimbursement in the amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents.
You got a motion for it? Joe, second from Laura, all in favor?
Thank you. The committee also has a list of the uh latest appointments from our previous meeting. And I also have for you this evening um a transportation update and um how we have um.
Before before Kathy jumps into this one, um I I just wanna just say that I give her a ton of credit because she reviewed um you know, this committee, the finance committee has, you know, repeatedly asked us to con- consistently look at like expenses and opportunities for cost cutting, and I think this is a great example of the hard work that Kathy has done to really, you know, save close to five hundred thousand dollars over a six-year period, and I'm I'm gonna let her ex- uh kind of go through how that's gonna happen, but it's just tremendous, and it's gonna help us with budgeting for the next six years.
So essentially, as you know, at the end of the school year, we had the um the deficit in the sped transportation. And um so how I tried to mitigate that was with a bidding process over the summer. And I grouped together all of our routes, which you can see on this spreadsheet, and we sent them out as a, actually as a bid. And my original thought to reduce the expense was to send them as to many vendors as possible based on what we knew in terms of all of our special ed routing that we had um the need for. And I was really hoping I'd get better uh rates um or somebody would sharpen their pencil, but essentially that just didn't happen. But by putting together this spreadsheet, it was clear that we had, you know, number of students. We had an opportunity where we literally were uh paying over thirty thousand dollars for transporting one student at a time to a particular out-of-district um requirement, so or program. So essentially um looking at that gave me the idea of um moving in a different direction in discussing it with Lenny. Um I didn't know if I, time-wise, if I had the time, but you know, we had the opportunity to purchase the four vans at twenty-five thousand each, even with the gas um in year one. Um it's it's going to cost us about fifteen thousand dollars just for the sped local. Will be um over in year one. However, I knew there were other advantage to having those vans um at our disposal. So we have all this small group programming that we could really access these vans for, you know, vocational um job um availability for the the students in the pre pr- uh bistro, the post bistro, to have access to the vans and be able to take the vans with, some of the um teachers do have their seven D license. Um in addition to that, we have the music department that does a lot of small group competition that would have access. Our athletic department, which could be at as much as a three hundred dollar charge for any kind of off-campus charge. And again, like I said, the job sites, small field trips, that's an opportunity. And what we're not using them for, which we could expand, was something with our our clubs, our groups. They're here, they would be available for the hiking group, the steam group, anybody that needed to have, you know, seven and under students or or, you know, combine them, and we could do thirteen students at a time. So that was an opportunity, and um again, it gives us the ability to screen our drivers and um bring them on with the standard of Milford and what we hire our staff at. And then what I've done in the past with the vans is as they age out, um typically they don't have the mileage that um you would wanna dispose of or trade them. We've handed them down to other departments like the technology department, take out the um the seating capacity, and then it becomes a very mobile useful tool for the tech department or any depart- athletic department. So that was kind of my vision, but um as you can see, over the course of, after year one with the first class to district, we have the potential to save over four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, and that's just our local money. And now that the vans have been um purchased, they're ready to go, they're detailed. Um we're looking to, because there's only one student on a seven-passenger van, maybe talking to Hope Dale in Mendon, some of the area schools, let them know what four or five routes we're doing with these vans. If they have a student going to this particular school, we could charge them uh for our van and uh capture some revenue there.
And they win because we charge it as a reduced rate and it would cut our costs as well.
So it's another opportunity for us to try to mitigate the ever-growing special ed costs.
Did you give any um projections on that, Kath? Like if you were able to actually, you know, if there were other districts that were interested in kind of leveraging space or capacity? Like m- how much?
We're just doing the reach out now, Jim, but honestly, I would say whatever their cost is, we would offer them fifty percent.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you'd cut their costs in half for them?
Yeah, and then we would gain that fifty percent revenue. It would come with a small cost 'cause we would have to increase probably a, maybe a half hour, an hour on the day of the driver, um but the opportunity would be there.
Okay, thank you.
And when we do routes, um sometimes through um like vendors, they'll pick up kids from multiple districts, so it's not an uncommon practice.
Right.
And it's purchasing four vans?
They're on site. And you can see in the spreadsheet the the routes that we ended up moving forward with. Um one route alone was sixty thousand a year to transport one student, and that was going to um Bedford, Mass.
Alright.
And um so that that route alone, I think, will be very successful over the next two to three years.
That's awesome. Great work, Kathy. Any questions or discussions in the room?
No, this this is a good.
Thank you.
And the the purchase.
Sorry, Chris?
The purch- sorry, yeah, um the purchase of this we will come out of our 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 budget, our regular budget, so.
Special ed transportation.
Okay, and is this something that we need to review with income? 'Cause I know in the past sometimes they've been, oh, you know, they've had concerns, um.
Well, we took, the expense came from the department for which it was budgeted.
Okay.
Um we're just accessing the dollars in a different way.
Right.
And we're gonna share this information with them when we meet on September.
Exactly, I mean I, certainly the bottom line's a, it's a half million dollar savings, so I'm sure they'll get on board, I just wanna make sure
Yeah.
that they're they're aware of some of our purchases like this, just to, again, we just wanna keep their support.
Can we get a, like once, c- can we get an overview of what that the criteria or an agenda for that meeting is gonna look like?
Yeah, I can share that with the committee. It's really just, I mean, it's it's gonna be the two of, the two warrants, a review of the um long-range uh capital plan,
Yeah, can you just?
and then we're gonna share the van information.
Okay, so if we could just, maybe if we could just share that with the committee before.
Yeah, and I and I can even do an overview email afterwards, just to kinda share what the result of it was.
Alright, cool.
I have a question. I just wanna say, Kathy, um this was really a good analysis and things to add, it was really helpful.
Thank you, thank you, Laura.
Okay.
Cool. I think this is a huge, Kathy, Kathy, so I appreciate you doing all the work. This might be a silly question, but so there's a couple routes that have one child that are more expensive? Why wouldn't we have selected those as the ones that we're doing? I'm sorry.
They are a wheelchair van, so I, that's a very extreme purchase, so um I didn't go in that direction.
And you can tell that, Kathy, by?
The student's needs.
Is it?
It wouldn't be, I.
There's no annotation on here, you just know that. Okay, I was just curious, where are those, you know, a third, where it's a more expensive by that one billion auction?
No. I started the, I started the.
Yeah.
I shouldn't, I didn't mean to doubt, I just, that was obvious to me, so thanks, okay.
No, that's okay.
Great. What we pay for on the contract side, there's no employee costs here, we don't, the employees are not a, the drivers are not employees of Milford Public Schools.
They.
When we purchase, they are, so.
They will be in my proposal.
That's what I'm saying, so currently we don't. Does your proposal take into account salaries of the of the drivers?
Yes, it does.
Excellent.
And the good news is, from what we're looking at, our um applicants um in doing our background checks have uh perfect attendance records, and uh that's really great for the students because it gives them the continuity of having the same driver, and so we were very fortunate with the direction of hire as well.
And when would we be able to implement this?
Within a week or two.
So they can.
If not next week, that following Monday, we're executing, I think it's the seventeen.
Yeah. So the current contracts that we have, we're able to move away from them and and.
Mm-hmm. Special ed doesn't require you to have a contract, um so that's a- again, another benefit.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Um so the committee also has this evening um out-of-state travel requests from um Mr. Consigli and Dr. McIntyre. Um so if.
We're not going anywhere together. I just wanna be clear on that.
You wanna say no now?
Do you want to um just speak, Craig, to, Craig's looking to go to the Learning Forward Annual Conference.
Sure. Learning Forward Annual Conference, um in the the past several years I've gone to the ASCD conference. Um this year I'm I I'm going to the learning, I'd like to go to the Learning Forward Conference. Um it's, the focus of the Learning Forward Conference is more on teacher professional development and how central administrators or administrators can help, I guess, plan for teacher professional development. Um there's a heavy focus on instructional coaching as well, so I'm looking to go to the this conference and learn more about instructional coaching and just different ways to implement the instructional coaches we have. But in the schools that we don't have instructional coaches, what are other ways that we could utilize staff? Um so that maybe we could offer other training methods, I guess, um with the staff that we have. So I guess that's what I'm after at at this conference. I don't I don't know if you need more information, I provided some information in the packet. Um but I'd be going on Sunday, the December eighth uh through Wednesday, December eleventh.
Okay. Okay, second? Laura?
Yeah.
D- yeah, okay, Laura, all in favor?
Thank you.
And then for.
And yep, and then my request is um, this is a program, I think I spoke to the committee before, I think with some of you individually and as a group. Um it's called the School Research Nexus, and it's a invited group of superintendents throughout the country. Um i- it focuses on innovative practices, leadership, um they bring in kind of high-level professional development and it requires um out-of-state travel in October and April.
Okay, any motion? Motion. Chris, second? John, all in favor? Tom? Is that it, Mrs. Kathy?
That's it, I'm leaving, Mr. Chief.
Okay, moving on to future agenda items. Anybody have anything they want to add to the next agenda?
Can can I just share, um next, the the second meeting in September, with the dates escaping me right now.
Twenty-sixth.
Thank you, is um Dorothy Presser from MASC is gonna do kind of a a a presentation from six to seven um and focus on the superintendent evaluation, so I just wanna just remind people of that, that's going.
Okay. Anyone else, Chris, or?
Hmm, nothing on new business.
Good, okay. Uh old business?
I'm ready for that one, that's.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
Uh so I followed up, um the question that I had on the last meeting too was the budget subcommittee. So I followed up with uh M A S C, and uh yes, we we don't need a budget subcommittee. Um well actually a lot of school districts are actually going away with it, going away from it just because of the complexity of um of the budget process. So by law, we don't, we can, we don't need to have that full uh a, excuse me, a subcommittee. We can go over budgets as a full committee. Uh certainly we have to uh adhere to open meeting laws because we would be a full committee. But um yeah, certainly we can, you know, if if this body wants to, in a sense, dissolve that subcommittee and be a full committee, then we can do that. Is there any other questions on that?
Well, I I don't know if it's a question or a comment, the the only um my only worry about that, and and I agree, that our primary focus as a as a committee is is budget, right? It's one of the three.
Great.
But um, you know, what if there's meetings that need to be scheduled where we can't get a a quorum if we abo- if we d- abolish the subcommittee? So if we can't get four, four full members, um what are your thoughts on that? I'm not, and I'm
Right.
I I I think, you know, the full committee should be involved. Uh in a perfect world, we don't need a subcommittee. So just thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think based off what we saw last year, um you know, at all the full committee meetings based on budget, everybody was here. So I think that everybody has a a strong interest and kind of makes their schedule so that they can attend these meetings. I think I also look at it that I'm hoping that by allowing us to be a part of the process throughout the entire committee, that maybe that six-hour day that we spend on a Saturday in early January can can be much less.
Like five and a half hours?
Yeah, exactly, so so certainly we can um, you know, hopefully be more informed going into the budget season. Um you know, and again, so going back to, yeah, I wish I had a crystal ball to say yes, everybody would be there, but I again, based off of the budget season last year and with the ones that I've been involved in, um it's, we've always easily had a full quorum.
And and it might it might be a lot more effective because you don't have to take the time for the subcommittee to bring um any ideas or or inclinations back to the full committee.
Exactly.
And um, you know, getting four as a quorum shouldn't be difficult, so yeah, I'm, you know, I was inherently in favor of it anyway, so yeah.
Yeah, and like.
It was just a thought that.
Right, in in talking with that MASC, it sounds like, yeah, more districts are doing this, just again, from an information standpoint, that everybody gets to hear that information firsthand and and uh be able to ask the questions at that time and work through.
Yeah, and I know that in the past we've had budget subcommittee meetings where we've had more members of the school committee that planned to attend, and we've had to, uh you know, they couldn't, they couldn't deliberate as part of the meeting, or if we knew in advance, we could post it as a, you know, change it from a subcommittee to a full committee meeting. So this is, this is probably better all around.
And I would say the worst case is um if we don't have a quorum at any given meeting that we have, we just couldn't deliberate or meet, but you could share information, right? Even if you're, even if you post it.
I I would think so, because at that point it's not a
It's a posted meeting.
it's not a meeting, it's not an official meeting, it's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
It's just a few people sitting around talking.
Yeah, may as well be a honeybee.
Yeah. So.
Okay, is there an action from that, or is that further discussion or?
Um. It was, I guess it was more for discussion. Um I guess we can update Jen on this, just to make sure, I think ultimately being that she's the chairperson, would be her decision on which direction to go in, so we'll we'll feed her the information
Okay.
and uh let her make the decision on uh if she would prefer to keep the subcommittee or bring it to the whole, bring it as a whole committee.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, and I could talk to Jen to see how she wants to proceed.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on that, or no? Well then I need a motion to adjourn. Joe, second from Laura, all in favor? Thank you very much.